Welcome. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of meeting with our attorneys for updates on PTA negotiations, capital negotiations. So a motion please. Krista, thank you. Scott, thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. We're off to executive session. Okay. Welcome. We're returning from executive session. I need a motion to open the public session. Scott, Henry Flynn, thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. We are now in the public session. If I can also see your left, correct this in the front.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are off with administrative remarks. Scott, if you'd like to say it, or should I give you a break?
That would be great. Thank you. Good evening. A week from tomorrow, Wednesday, March 4th, is our final professional learning day for the year. We are already moved even, well, we have been moved even in preparation for months. We'll begin the day with our mandated E&amp;L training where we're partnering with Hudson Valley Regional Bilingual Education Resource Network to come in and provide some professional learning along with some of our own teachers and administrators. Our teachers will have a menu of options to choose from for that portion. We'll then go into our inquiry strands, which we began in October. After lunch, we'll come back and the Strategic Coherent Plan Team Steering Committee recommended that we actually give a presentation that we gave to the tri case groups, so that'll happen for about a half hour. And then in the afternoon, teachers are able to work on all things curriculum instruction and assessment that have to do with their particular content areas that they wish to focus on, and we'll do that with grade levels and vertically as well. So it looks like it should be a great day. I'd like to thank our professional learning team for all the work that they have put into that. At the conclusion of the day, we'll make sure that we survey our staff in order to inform our future planning. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. So as I previously mentioned at prior board meetings, the region's teacher hiring fair will be taking place this Saturday in White Plains, organized by the Lower Hudson Association of School Personnel Administrators. Participation includes districts from five neighboring counties in the Hudson Valley. Representatives from our administrative team will be present to conduct screening interviews of prospective candidates for anticipated vacancies in each building for next school year. In total, we will be screening over thirty-five candidates on Saturday for a variety of positions in the hopes of inviting promising candidates forward to Brewster to continue in the hiring process. It's worth mentioning that as we begin to move into the height of hiring season and the recruitment of high-quality candidates, it's important to share that the district is committed to a thoughtful and thorough process recognizing the importance of several critical non-negotiables during the hiring process, which include that any recommended candidate that's sent to the superintendent for final recommendation to the board will have had contact three times with the building principal or director through that process. That occurs through a screening, a larger committee interview of shared stakeholders, and finally, a demonstration lesson. Any candidate that's being recommended, there's a thorough reference check that's completed by the administrator, including the assurance that contact was made with the individual's most recent supervisor. And finally, all application paperwork is completed, including the candidate's official transcript and certification check before a scheduled meeting of district office to meet with Dr. Banlow and Dr. Lash. So with that, I will pass the baton to my colleague, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
I have two quick ones before our budget presentations. Just want to update the board, so our architect interview process is underway. We've interviewed two firms. We have two more firms to interview on Friday, March 6th, after which point we make a recommendation to the board to appoint new architects to complete our building condition survey and update our five-year capital plan. Our audit committee met this morning to review the draft controller's audit report as well as our corrective action plan. They've recommended that we send our corrective action plan up to the controller's office, after which point they will attach it to the report, finalize it, and then issue it. After they issue the report, we'll then present that to the Board of Education for acceptance sometime later this spring. Dr. Banlow and I had an exit interview with the examiners. They didn't give us any details, any, you know, concrete timeline, so we're really uncertain of when they'll release our report, but we've done everything we can to get them to release it as soon as possible. And that concludes my comments for this evening.
Dale, we don't know when, but we have a gist of what, or they were, there could be more than they let us know as far as.
No, they reported, so they provided us a draft report to which we've responded to. Since we've responded to it, they will then finalize it.
It's not like they'll come out with more stuff that we're, oh, just wanted to check if we'll still get hit over the head. Okay, so great, thank you. Welcome. Dr. Banlow?
So this morning, five o'clock AM, we had WNBC News come out to videotape our career skills program. Mrs. Schneider and Mrs. Barnes were there with all of their teacher assistants. Our students were there. Our high school administration was there, and they highlight, they spent about two hours this morning there with the children. They were so impressed with the programs that they have. Everything from the Bubbly Bears laundromat was the main thing they highlighted today, which I know many of you have already seen. The Handy Claws program, where they make food for different meetings that come about, and also their Guest Chef program, the Bear's Den Coffee House. So they might even be coming back again because they were just so thrilled with what they saw today. So the kids, they loved every minute. One of the students even spent about ten minutes with the cameraman because he wanted to learn all about the cameras. So it was just adorable. Next Tuesday night is the winter sports award ceremony. Our athletic director wanted me to remind you, six-thirty PM at the VHS gym. And also Friday, March 6th, is the Mr. Brewster contest. I'm looking forward to it. I heard it's a major event to raise money for cystic fibrosis research, so I'll put that into the Friday update for you as well to remind you. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. For me, I just wanted to recap that last meeting we had exec actor for our mid-year reviews with Dr. Banlow and the board. And I just, I thought it went quite well. I thought we were all communicating well with each other and sharing, you know, our strengths and areas we want to focus on still. And I just, I thought it was a really great productive meeting. I just wanted to kind of update the community as well, that we're staying on top of things we need to do in all facets. Okay, so now we move on to our student representative. Welcome.
Thank you. The boys, four by two hundred three eighteen, which is Max Kohler, Jason Monet, Michael Gonch, and Brendan McBride, qualified for the New York State track and field championships. They qualified by one one-hundredth of a second, and, which was a new school record. They'll be competing on March 7th. As Dr. Banlow mentioned earlier this morning, NBC this year did videotape the Second Mountain Bubbly Bear, so those other programs. Tomorrow, the high school will be having our recognition ceremony. Students recognized by teachers and staff, not for academics but for effort and improvement. That'll be at eight-thirty in the morning. The PTA is having a penny more fundraiser right in the lobby where different classes compete, see who can raise the most money. And sports awards will be on March 3rd, and as Dr. Banlow mentioned, Mr. Brewster will be on March 6th at six-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we now move on to presentations and tradition discussion. And first up, this discussion on general legal counsel appointment. That's me. It's, um, it's Teresa. Okay. So this first to go over, this is our timeline. We had posted this a while ago when Dr. first presented a timeline that worked for us. And, um, yeah, okay, so I think over there it outlines the days we met. And then we had also, after the final interview, there were still follow-up calls made to other districts who used the various firms that we interviewed, and that information was compiled. And then we met an exec to discuss all the information we had and to recap, you know, our thinking and all that. So these were the firms, again, to recap that we previously presented, these were the firms that we interviewed. And we spent a couple hours with each, so they were lengthy. I think we, I really felt like we'd been drilling them pretty good. And just to go over, before we go to the next slide, the questions, the categories of the questions, I can put this up there because I just kind of summarized it from our work. But just to share the categories that we covered, and everyone had the same exact questions. And even, for example, everyone knows, you know, Thomas Doherty Roxman, that's a firm that we've been using. The questions were the same for that. We wanted to make sure the process was very consistent and thorough that way. So we covered ten topics, client updates on legal matters, so how would they update us and administration on all different various matters, student registration and residency verification, homeless students, all that pertains to that particular topic. And again, all of this related to their experience, their work with districts, and, you know, however they felt to answer the questions. Capital projects, their experience with that, dealing with contracts, contractors, issues with that stuff, DEP, et cetera. People personnel services, topics, discipline matters, you know, how do they determine, did each firm determine when they would settle on a case or litigate, you know, just all that goes, that goes into that. Collective bargaining, DASAC questions. We covered technology and social media matters. Conflict resolution, you know, how do they interact and manage issues when they arise between the board, the board of them, the board of the superintendent, you know, the staff, just all different types of conflict resolution questions. Educational trends and challenges related to them, as they saw in the work that they do in the different districts that they work in. And lastly was dealing with communication, again, but dealing with communication as it relates to the community on different difficult matters. What am I going to hear? I'm sorry. Ensuring, you know, communicating, everyone's informed, if different people within the district or individual board members would be reaching out, how do they manage, stuff like that. And also communication in terms of how they staff themselves within relation to the district, is it a team effort? Is it a point person? That kind of stuff. So while it was ten topics, there were more than, more than that, we followed up questions and stuff. They, of course, had questions for us. They were able all to present information about their firm that they wanted before for us to hear first, and I thought that was, we were quite thorough on all of that. So just to, let's see, go next. This was, this is an outline of the fee schedule that they each proposed initially. And so while absolutely cost is always a concern for us, we're always trying to watch dollars in this district, we kept that there because you can always, assume you can negotiate certain things. So we really wanted to focus on the categories, the questions, the different topics that were important to the district, issues, and that kind of stuff. And so, that's one thing. Okay. So then, what I can just briefly also say, in the reference checks that were done, and there were at least two districts contacted for each firm interviewed. Some had more, depending on just, you know, who was willing to get back and share information. And, you know, what was interesting is that what one district may have found as a strength, other districts may not have found that same thing to be a strength for them. And we'll go into some of the strengths and weaknesses, we'll each kind of share with the firm that we chose, so we can kind of talk through how we got to the conclusion. But at the end of the very lengthy process, we did decide to go with Thomas Doherty Roxman and Pedaloo Mayo. We are going to stay with the firm. I know when they last did the search, historical knowledge was big for the board at that time. And for us, that was just one of the considerations. It may have actually been kind of the last consideration, which while it's a very important one, we wanted to make sure that we were addressing all the other issues that were important to us, and, you know, again, history and cost kind of be the last two things. So I can start off with some points, and then we can go around the table. But first, what I found interesting was in the reference checks that I did, and Eric actually helped me out there as well, there weren't any negative comments about, I'll refer to them just as Thomas Doherty Roxman, because I like the name. So they, it was interesting to me that for all the districts that used them or have switched very recently to using them, there was just no negative comments. There was no this works for us, it didn't work for us conversation, whereas all the other firms did have that situation. Every district themselves, well, we still stayed with them, but, or we loved them, but another district said we just couldn't use them anymore. So I found that to be very interesting, that all the other firms had their strengths and weaknesses, and Thomas Doherty Roxman, that firm, was quite consistent across the board. So let's see. We, we asked ourselves as a board, we were recapping the entire process, what, you know, let's start with what our issues are with the current firm. You know, did we, were we able to address the issues? Were there other firms that could provide better service for us in those areas? And what our conclusion was, that the negatives of the firm that we had, had, had been using were sporadic and in very pinpointed, like very specific contexts. And when we really looked at the work of a district as a whole, it's not just a particular board meeting or one particular topic. There is just a ton of stuff that goes on from every department to every negotiation to every lawsuit. There is a lot of stuff that goes on. And some of the weaknesses they, they did have, they themselves worked hard to improve on them within the context of the stuff we were going through. And let's see, I can also just add, before I go around the table, that we, after this discussion, we will have a meeting scheduled with them to go over some thoughts that we have and how we can continue to improve our relationship with them. And we, in our, the process actually discovered a lot more that there are firm offers that we weren't utilizing that we can absolutely do. So maybe we can go around the table, and everyone can just share, you know, what the process was for you in terms of reviewing and analyzing the different firms that we interviewed, and why you came to the decision you came to. And then I'll look at my notes and see what, what we haven't covered yet, just because I need some water. So who wants to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
I think that each of the firms we interviewed, and they were lengthy, I think they were even surprised at how lengthy they were. All of the firms were clearly capable of providing the legal services that they were, you know, they were all impressive, they were all well-spoken, they all knew the issues as we brought them up with them. So it wasn't a situation where it was just so clear that one firm just, you know, knocked it out of the park and were, you know, better than the others. So we really couldn't make the decision based on that and had to go to, you know, other factors. And one of the things that you raised was probably the biggest factor for me is the fact that the relationship with the lawyers, while they're the board's lawyers, we probably have some of, probably the least contact with them. They have, their relationships are with district, with the department heads, with principals, dealing with, you know, special education issues or lawsuits and stuff would come to us. But they have almost day-to-day relationships with district head, you know, department heads here, that, you know, those relationships take time to develop, and there's a trust involved in that. And I would have to really have a very compelling reason personally to decide that it would be a good idea to change law firms when those relationships are positive as far as, as, you know, we've been informed. So that was one thing that I definitely put a lot of weight on. And, I mean, there were other things, but a lot of people talked to those things.
Through the process for me, it was more so, again, all of the law firms interviewed very well. And one of the things I was trying to figure out is what all the others is going to bring that's going to be better than what we currently have. And unfortunately, it, uh, it didn't get to that point. It was very, pretty much the same, flat line. But the difference that I took away from the current, or the current firm that we selected is the responsiveness. Whenever we had major issues or concerns, they were right, they were right at the doors, they were ready to go, go to action, go to battle. Certain things I can't talk about, but from the board aspect, you guys know what I mean in regards to how they handle certain situations that, you know, came out in our favor. Well-liked, limited interaction again, but at the same time, just seeing how they deal with the, with the administrative team, with the teachers and so forth, interactions in between, that is also was appealing as well. And just the large, you know, the large variety of expertise that was presented when we interviewed. There were some that had one or two representatives versus we had people speaking from one side of the table to the other side, just giving this full description of anything we do with them. And conflict, again, you know, the educational trends is what I talked, what I asked them about. And I thought out of all the firms, they addressed those concerns that we had, or the trends, what's happening, that's happening in the educational environment right now. And I think that was, that was very, very appealing to me and very compelling. And I decided, that's why I decided to go with that firm. Stay with us.
So I haven't, obviously, been on the board for very long, so, um, so I'm, you know, I'm just getting to know, you know, our firm. And I think before I was on the board, I felt motivated to, you know, get out there and see, and interview, and see what other firms had to offer. I think our interviewing process was a good one, and it was very thorough, and we did ask a lot of good questions. Some firms were better at answering some of those questions than others. But in the long run, what struck me the most was how comfortable you guys all were with our firm, and how willing and open they were to listening to us and really hearing our concerns and to, you know, like, try to find out where we're coming from and, you know, you know, how we were feeling about things. And I think that they were willing to take our feedback really well, too, as far as the things that we were having issues with and we wanted them to work on. I appreciated their willingness to do that. So that's kind of what cemented things for, for me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carlson?
Okay. Yeah, we reviewed all the information from all the firms, spent a couple hours with each, and like Carrie pointed out, they all could do the job. They have a peculiar stance on the region and the school districts that are around here. And when you brought in all the firms, and I'm not going to say something and take it as seriously, but you could tell from the input, when you brought up a question, you know, we're in the watershed, half of them didn't know what the watershed was, other ones did, I mean, they, to our issues. Some of them actually did research, said, no, oh, you just debited your contract. You went to a two-step. And that's great, only one of the, in the county that has these cost controls built in, which was all, that's the victim here. But they knew it, and some firms did, some didn't. They put as much care into the interview as somebody who had just been there from day one. So they took it seriously. And I myself had personally, we definitely have to look at attorneys more often, we have to review what's going on. But they were willing to listen, and they responded to us, they have a relatively good track record of our special head, you know, meet hearings, our discipline meetings, other items that go on behind the scenes that aren't as glorious, they have a track record, and they built with the school district, the administration. And on cost control, I mean, obviously, their costs are in line with, they're very competitive. And streamlining some stuff that we had issues with, they know this is how we do it, and we're looking to maybe focus a bit more and keep more things under control so we can have a better number that's stable through it. And they responded to our issues, and the community issues on some things that have happened, and will continue to fight it to, and they were definitely in line with them continuing that process.
Well, I don't have much to say. You can. I think, as everybody told, touch base, each one of the firms was well-prepared to do the workhorse, or an inadequate panel to be interviewed. I just, I just like the fact that the firm has worked so well with our administration and past administrations. They, they know the history of Brewster, and there was, there was nothing striking that would make me want to remove them. I don't think they've ever done an inadequate job. Nobody's perfect. You know, got a strike against them, they're willing to correct whatever little miniscule road bumps have been hidden. I'm very happy with the decision that we're going to take.
So going through this process, I had heard from people in the community about what the concerns were going forward with our, the law firm, what some of the issues were, some of which, when you are inside an executive session meeting, and you might actually hear a lot more of the backstory, you understand that the public unfortunately doesn't get as much information as we do, and so that there's, you know, the opportunity for some misunderstandings to be there. But then there were some issues that I think that they, they owned up and said, you know, well, we could have done a better job on that, and we're, we're continuing to work on that, which I think was, was a big deal. You know, the, the relationship aspect of it, I think, is, is significant, but, you know, you hire a lawyer to mitigate risk, and in the year and a half that I've been on the board, we've had a couple instances where we were exposed to risk, and they managed to get us through those things that we are not currently involved in anything that is going to be a long-term. They've done their job, and they've done it well. You know, I think it was a great opportunity for us to relook at that relationship with them and to relook at sort of our relationship with our legal provider and make sure that we were on the right page, but I think they've done a great job, and I think they've definitely earned our trust going forward.
Thank you. Dr. Banlow, you started with us as well? Do you want to add some thoughts?
Yeah. I would just like to say that I think the board was extremely thorough, about an hour and a half for each firm. We were here well into the early morning.
Sorry. How did you get used to it? Did I? Should I take over for a minute? Sorry. Oh, I'm sick. So just to add a couple things, so yes, so we went around the table just now, I actually underlined some key things. Some of the things that the other districts that use the different law firms, with the pluses and minuses, the strains that they had, and the reason why they left the firms they had, which were some of the other firms we interviewed, to go to Thomas Doherty Roxman and the firm, first the firm, is, was the responsiveness. Everyone who uses them said that no one's better, that they just get back to, can reach them at all hours, just twenty-four-seven. And the listening and the feedback piece was also huge, where other firms, those were issues. You're not going to say who or what or whatever, but those were issues that they felt the boards would feel they weren't heard, that they felt they were trying to share information, and they just, the legal team was just like, their egos were a little too big. I mean, we did meet with some people who were very knowledgeable, and they didn't necessarily present well, because you didn't think that you could have an actual relationship with them, that they would actually hear you if you were sharing your concerns. And that, you know, and the fact that our experience in interviewing, what we were kind of getting off the exchange, was reinforced by what others said when I called around, was consistent, you know, so that was kind of good to hear that we were on the right page, I think. And, you know, Eric brought up looking at our relationship with them again, and that's one of our, you know, like I said earlier, our intentions is to sit down with them and go through, because with the process, we did see things like, oh, they do this good, but they could do it a little bit better, or, you know, just little tweaks that we felt we could really, would really improve. And one of the things, for example, we haven't utilized them enough. We tend to call them as a district or as a board with questions and issues, rather than, they can provide trainings for us so that we're all on the same page, we have that understanding and that knowledge, so we don't have to call them to say, you know, was this okay? So we can actually cut back on cost.
What all the others is going to bring is going to be better than what we currently have. And unfortunately, it uh, it didn't get to that point. It was very uh, pretty much the same flat line. But the difference that I took away from the current or the current firm that we selected is the responsiveness. Um, whenever we had major issues or concerns, they were right there, right at the doors, they were ready to go, go to action, go to battle. Um, certain things I can't talk about, but from a board aspect, you guys know what I mean in regards to how they handle certain situations that, you know, came out in our favor. Um, well liked, uh, limited interaction again, but at the same time, just seeing how they deal with the, with the administrative team, with the teachers and so forth, um, interactions in between, that is also was appealing as well. Um, and just the large, you know, the large variety of expertise that was presented when we interviewed them. There were some that had one or two representatives versus we had people speaking from one side of the table to the other side, just giving us full description of anything we do with them. Um, and uh, conflict again, uh, you know, the educational trends is where I talked, what I asked them about. And I thought out of all the firms, they addressed those concerns that we had, what were the trends, what's happening that's happening in the educational environment right now. And um, I think that was, that was very, very appealing to me and very compelling. And I decided, that's why I decided to go with that firm and stay with us.
Um, so I haven't obviously been on the board for very long, so um, so I'm, you know, I'm just getting to know, um, you know, our firm. And um, I think before I was on the board, I felt motivated to, you know, get out there and see an interview and see what other firms had to offer. Um, I think our interviewing process was a good one and it was very thorough and um, we did ask a lot of good questions. Um, some firms were better at answering some of those questions than others. But um, in the long run, what struck me the most was um, how comfortable you guys all were with our firm and how willing and um, open they were to listening to us and really hearing our concerns and to, you know, like, try to find out where we're coming from and, and you know, you know, how we were feeling about things. And I think that they were willing to take our feedback, um, really well too, um, as far as the things that we were having issues with and we wanted them to work on. Um, I appreciated their willingness to do that. So that's kind of what cemented things for, for me.
Okay, yeah, we reviewed all the information from all the firms, spent a couple hours with each and like Kerry pointed out, they all could do the job. Um, they have a peculiar stance on the region and the school districts that are around here. And when you broaden all the firms, not to say something and take it as seriously, but you could tell from the input, uh, when you brought up a question, you know, where the watershed, half of them didn't know what watershed was, other ones did, I mean, they, to our issues. Some of them actually did research, said, no, oh, you just duplicated your contract. You went to a two-step. And that's great, only one of the, um, in the county that has these cost controls built in, which was all thanks to Victor here, but they knew it and some firms did, some didn't. They put as much care into the interview as somebody who had just been there from day one. So they took it seriously and I myself had personally, we definitely have to look at attorneys more often, we have to review what's going on. But they were willing to listen and they responded to us, they have a relatively good track record of our special head, you know, meet hearings, uh, discipline meetings, other items that go on behind the scenes that aren't as glorious, they have a track record and they've built with the school district, the administration. And on cost control, I mean, obviously their costs are aligned with, um, they're very competitive. And streamlining some stuff that we had issues with, they know this is how we do it and we're looking to maybe focus a bit more and keep more things under control so we can have a better number that's stable through it. And they responded to our issues and the community issues on some things that have happened and will continue to fine tune and they were definitely in line with them continuing that process.
Well, I don't have much to say. Egan? I think as everybody told, touch base, each one of the firms was well prepared to do the workhorse or inadequate panel to be interviewed. I just, I just like the fact that the firm has worked so well with our administration and past administrations, they, they know the history of Brewster and uh, there was, there was nothing striking that would make me want to remove them. Uh, I, I don't think they've ever done an inadequate job. Nobody's perfect. You know, got a strike against them, they're willing to correct whatever little miniscule road bumps have been hidden. I'm very happy with the decision that we've decided.
So going through this process, um, I had heard from people in the community about what, what the concerns were going forward with our, our, the law firm, what some of the, the issues were, uh, some of which, when you are inside an executive session meeting and you might actually hear a lot more of the backstory, you understand that the public unfortunately doesn't get as much information as we do and so that there's, uh, you know, the opportunity for some misunderstandings to be there. But then there were some issues that I think that they, they owned up and said, you know, well, we could have done a better job on that and we're, we're continuing to work on that, which I think was, um, was a big deal. You know, the, the relationship aspect of it, I think is, is significant, but you know, you hire a lawyer to mitigate risk and in the year and a half that I've been on the board, we've had a couple instances where we were exposed to risk and they managed to get us through, um, those things that we are not currently involved in anything that is going to be a long-term, they've done their job and they've done it well. Um, you know, I think it was a great opportunity for us to relook at that relationship with them and to relook at sort of our relationship with our legal provider and make sure that we were on the right page, but um, I, I think they've done a great job and I think they've definitely earned our trust, um, going forward.
Dr. Banly, you started with us as well, us as well, do you want to add some thoughts?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think the board was extremely thorough, about an hour and a half for each firm. We were here well into the early morning. Sorry.
How did you get used to it, did I? Should I take over for a minute? Sorry. Oh, I'm sick. Um, so just to add a couple things, so yes, so when we went around the table just now, I actually underlined some key things. Some of the things that the other districts that use the different law firms, the, with the pluses and minuses, the strains that they had, um, and the reason why they left the firms they had, which were some of the other firms we interviewed, to go to Thomas Drowhan and, and firm, first the firm, is, was the, the responsiveness. Everyone who uses them said that no one's better, um, that they just get back to, can reach them at all hours, just 24/7. And um, the listening and the feedback piece was also huge, where other firms, um, those were issues, you're not going to say who or what or whatever, but those were issues, um, that they felt the boards would feel they weren't heard, that they felt they were trying to share, um, information and they just, the legal team was just like, their egos were, were a little too big. I mean, we did meet with some people who were very knowledgeable, um, and they didn't necessarily present well because you didn't think that you could have an actual relationship with them, that they would actually hear you if you were sharing your concerns. And um, that, you know, and the fact that our experience in interviewing, what we were kind of getting off the exchange was reinforced by what others said when I called around was consistent, you know, so that was kind of good to hear that we were on the right page, I think. Um, and you know, Eric brought up looking at, um, our relationship with them again and that's one of our, you know, like I said earlier, our intentions is to sit down with them and, um, go through, because with the process, we did see things like, oh, they do this good, but they could do it a little bit better or, you know, just little tweaks that we felt we could really, would really improve. Um, and one of the things, for example, we haven't utilized them enough. We tend to call them as a district or as a board with questions and issues rather than, um, they can provide trainings for us so that we're all on the same page, we have that understanding and that knowledge, so we don't have to call them to say, you know, was this okay? So we can actually cut back on cost, um, by doing some, just some trainings internally on, on key topics within the district. And um, just some other points I just wanted to, to mention, that while they all, the firms absolutely, yes, they could get a job done and some stood out in certain areas versus others, but what this firm has, um, Thomas Drowhan's, they, they all, um, could speak to any issue, while they all do specialize, but they could all speak to any issue and they all litigate and they all, they work as a team at the same time. But it was striking how the other firms were very fragmented in that way or didn't even have representation to talk to issues we deal with in our district. Firms that, um, you know, seemed like, wow, other districts, other, other districts use them, they're great districts, but those districts use a second law firm to, to compensate for, for things that were lacking or missing. And I, we, you know, have a firm here that can address, um, speak to everything that we come across as a district. And um, let me just look at a few other comments. It is interesting to note that while we had, you know, it's no secret to the public, we had, uh, a lot of meetings two years ago that were a little rough, to say the least. And when we discuss some of that, um, as a board, it, it's a board meeting, so we as a board have to manage the board meeting. You know, it's not for an attorney who's someone who's supposed to make a comment to come and then manage if chaos ensues. And we recognize that, um, we as a board need to always maintain, you know, order and make sure we do a better job at how we utilize the information that people we have presenting, you know, how that all plays out. And um, interestingly enough though, so after all of that, there were districts that actually hired them because of our experience as a district, because of a lot of that, that they felt, um, even though it looked ugly for us, I think, to some extent, others saw the positive that came out of that. And um, some actually called me directly for their number back then, I remember, and others I didn't even know were using that when I got the list, said, oh, why'd you go to them? And they spoke to some of the strengths, which they worked through, you know, with us. Um, and other, other law firms just didn't have a strong of answers. So it goes to them just really willing to always do their homework. And let's see some other things that we discussed. One of the topics that they brought up was, um, unique to them, I thought, was how they, they talked about parents and they said they made it a point to stress, um, that they need to work with parents and not alienate them when they're dealing with certain issues within the district that have to do with students and families. And I, I may, I personally, I was personally known that I had made because no other district had said that, I mean, no other law firm has said that. Um, and they, you know, they talked about how all the districts, I don't know what I'm saying now, all the law firms did talk about how they would address, um, you know, handling different cases and those are pretty much the same, you know, like you're going to present facts, you're going to present costs and then you present, um, what direction you should, the recommendation would be in. And then some law firms presented themselves, I think, as being a little bit more, um, stuck in what they thought things should be and not as creative. And that was one of the critiques that I got out of some of the other districts that I called, that they felt some of these other firms weren't as creative and were problem solving. And that was one of the things they said about, uh, the Thomas Drowhan firm.
So I think, um, what kind of surprised me too was in these hour and a half interviews, we really got a sense of the culture of each one of these firms. Um, and especially for me, culture is, is a big deal and it means a lot because it, it sort of drives the decisions in the background and you don't even realize why you're going in a certain way and come to realize later on that it's because of the culture. And I thought all the firms were presented exceptionally well, but some of them definitely came with a more corporate culture, some of them came with a more interpersonal, um, culture. And I think we just really, or at least I, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I really kind of felt very comfortable with the culture that they presented to us while they were here. Um, you know, I think a lot of the answers that a lot of the firms gave to these questions were very similar across the board because when it comes to the law and how you do, how you do this kind of job, there is sort of a, a way about it. Um, but I thought I was very comfortable with sort of the way that they approached how they go about doing what they do and.
Yeah, and to add to that, it was interesting as well because, um, so people can say the law can be interpreted and then you can debate, I guess, what the words actually mean perhaps. Um, so it was interesting for me specifically with, you know, um, we all know that we were in direct communication with SED and our process, um, which we'll actually discuss in one of the action items later, um, with our, the residency and all that stuff. Um, so it was interesting in those questions that we did ask the firms, you know, how they interpreted the law or how they felt they could, I, I don't want to say manipulated, but interpret it, right? We'll go with that. And then their own partners would counter, well, you know, but you kind of still need to do, um, it, I don't know, can I say shady? It just felt a little shady to me. Um, and we, our job is to protect the district from liability and, you know, that's one of, one of our responsibilities. And so I was really looking for who is going to be the most consistent and give just honest answers, come across as you really want to do right by the district and, um, not get us into worse trouble, so to speak. So that was something that did stand out with me with some of the firms we were meeting, which clearly did with this one.
The one, the last thing I wanted just to, to mention was, um, how, you know, the board, all of you, just, it was a very, very serious decision. And you can see just a small snippet of how thorough you were in that hour and a half interview and also going into the night. So I think that, you know, it, it was extremely thorough with the process, so I just wanted to mention that.
I think one of the things you had mentioned also was they're obviously coming from New Jersey system to a New York system and how, um, thorough they were and how helpful in getting Iraq. And we're just, yes, a concern for us, right? We're hiring someone from another state and how's that transition going to look? And the fact that, um, in addition to other work that you did, but the fact that you were so quickly able to just come here, I, that concern was, didn't, almost didn't even exist after, after you started because it was just so seamless. And, and, you know, that they contributed to that as well, so. All right, so is there anything else someone wants to add in terms of our process and, thoughts on any of the firms? No? Okay. I mean, I could go on for lots of pages here.
That's okay.
But Victor's got to talk about more stuff.
I'm dying.
So yes, so we will, the, our rework meeting is when we assign our council for the year and I think it can be actually said, um, we were able to, um, negotiate with them, the fees with Thomas Drowhan. And so we are talking about, yes, they are, you know, positives to using them just from the cost perspective. And also when we talked about, um, different trainings that we could provide that would help us minimize the need to actually engage with them as much as we all have been doing. And, um, so we'll, we'll have that all up and ready for the July rework. The specific breakdown of everything. Okay, all right, so I'm done. Victor, you're up. We move on to regular agenda. Our 2020, 21 budget presentation, proposition number two for bus purchases. Carlson's, you guys have a part?
I didn't get a chance to upload the other one to, to Board Docs, I'll do that in a minute. I'm joined by Mary Smith, our supervisor of transportation, who's really going to take over and do the journey of the presentation here. So this is our, our annual event where we get together and talk about, um, our fleet replacement plan.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm very busy. So, uh, thank you all for inviting me. Every year I get the opportunity to go over the slides and, um, the only thing that really changes about them is the numbers, so I'd like to just have the opportunity to explain to you how the numbers change, why the numbers change and why we make these, the requests for these purchases. Um, on this slide, um, as you see, a big change from last year, if any of you remember, I think we had about 107 buses last year. When we made this presentation, we're down to 98. And within the age groups, that you see that we have 46 of our buses are within one to five years old and that seems really great, but in, as they move to the next category and they get to the top, we're going to have four to six buses that need to be replaced. So, um, not really, but we take good care of them. Currently, right now, we're looking at at least six buses that are 16 years plus in age and, um, I have to tell you that we maintain these buses really well and they're on the road because they're safe to be on the road and we're taking very good care of them.
Just, just to add to that, Mary, if I could interject, so, so last year, as Mary mentioned, our fleet was, uh, 106 buses, this year we're down to 98. That's not a bad thing. The reason, the reason why, uh, that 16 and up category at this time last year was 16 buses. And the majority of those buses that were removed from service were our oldest buses. And I think everyone remembers, and when you see this slide later on, back in 2001, when we purchased like 23 buses, they're starting to reach the age where they're falling out of service. So, um, the fleet in toll has gone down, but it's not alarming and certainly still, uh, you know, 98 buses is sufficient for us to meet the needs for transportation.
Yes, and, um, I was going to address that in a later slide, but I'll, um, now that Victor's brought it up, you wonder why, how are we operating with only 98 buses when you had 107 on the road last year? And, um, those buses that were taken off the road are, were old in age and they were only used for, um, you know, kind of in a retirement type of stage where they only went out to do short runs and they were used as spare buses while other buses were in, in the shop being serviced. I, I have, along with the mechanics, um, have put together a program where that when I'm taking the buses out of service for so long, this was a, um, recommendation coming from our assessment review that we had done and how to make sure that we don't physically take the bus off, off the road for seven days before a DOT. We really want the inspection to reflect the true shape of the bus at the time. So we don't want, um, per se, you know, kind of stage the bus for, we want to have a real inspection on the real quality of the bus. And, um, we really amp up the shop and, and the preventive maintenance on vehicles. So, uh, we're looking at projected future bus purchases based on a 10 to 15 year life cycle. Um, I mentioned before that what we do is, um, after 10 years, we kind of take the, we kind of give them a little bit of a break, we don't run them so aggressively and we use them on, you know, trips, shuttles, as spare buses, so they're not out there every day and this really helps extend the life of the vehicle. The financial benefits to putting together a, um, a plan of, replacement plan, fleet replacement plans are, um, they're predictable future costs, so we, we plan out, um, replacing seven buses a year, we know, we know what the cost is going to be. So it's cost effective for us and it's the safest means of budgeting, so we're not surprised we don't turn around, you know, in 10 years and we're saying, oh, now we need to replace 20 buses. It's a, a big hit and a tax pay. And we're consistent with the state A revenue. So the operational benefits for, um, replacing the buses every year is that we have newer and safer equipment, um, predictable equipment costs, so we know what the costs are going to be. We don't have unexpected, um, parts that are hard to, to get hold of. You know, you're paying a lot of inflated prices when it's an obsolete vehicle out there. Uh, reduced repair costs, we're not in the shop as much, we're not putting as much time in it, such to maintain, um, reduced parts inventory. So, um, just to let you know, and I'll Victor share with you, but we did go through, uh, whole year since I've taken over, um, we focused on getting, um, an accurate inventory and we currently have that right now. The assessment review had made that recommendation, it was something that had been being worked on for probably over five years. And we, I focused on it and I made sure that we accomplished the goal and we now have an accurate inventory. So we know, um, what parts we have all the time. We don't need to stock, you know, filter filters on the shelf and we also have, you know, overnight, anyone want or anything on Amazon, you know, on Sunday, they're coming up my driveway. Okay, thanks. You know, I didn't know the post office delivered on Sundays and, and go on that. Um, and it increased the service availability. So the buses, we have the part right away, we get the bus back on the road and, you know, they're really doing a great job down there. This is a chart of our disposals versus our replacements by year and, um, you know, if you look right now, we, you know, we can predict our replacements, we really can't predict our disposals. You know, we don't know when one of them is, you know, we're going to go through an inspection and we might find a crack. You know, they're, they're brought in on, they're on a plan, they're brought in, you know, every so many thousand miles, every so many months, they're doing it to inspect it, but every once in a while I'll get that phone call from Joe in the shop letting us know that, you know, another one has gone down. And just to, I just want to mention to you, if anyone's interested, that last year when I did the presentation, I, I had advised you that I was purchasing gasoline vehicles and, you know, it was, it was recommended by the, obviously the salesman that, you know, was a big seller, everyone was going for it. Um, we, we did, um, thank you for having faith in me, we love them. We've had zero, um, zero students left out in the cold this year. I know, you know, I can't give you too much credit, it hasn't been really that cold, but we did in the past, the older buses, the diesels, they, they longer to warm up, they're louder for the children, you know, the exhaust is, you know, very dirty. The, um, you know, we can talk about fuel, um, the gasoline right now is down, but you know, gasoline can go up, diesel can go up, you know, it's really, we do, um, participate in the bid, so we always make sure we get the lowest bid possible. And, um, I'll get to the next slide and this is what I, the point I'm getting to saying, wow, you're getting nine buses and you're spending the same money last year, you only got seven. We did get, did get gasoline buses last year, they were much cheaper to purchase. So, um, I also want to let you know that, um, this, what I'm asking for is not something that I say, hey, you know what, I feel like having vans this year. You know, this is something that I sit down with the shop, we, I evaluate, I put the runs together, um, you know, the key component for, for putting runs together, consolidating runs, I know what roads they travel on, I know how many miles they travel. I mean, you could probably ask me on any given day, not today, please, where a bus is going, what size it is, where it belongs. And this is not just, you know, just thrown together, this is a number at least on what we need to make sure that we have enough vehicles there to service the students that, you know, attend the schools. I show this every year, obviously, you know, I can't fool you guys, this is not this year. We haven't had enough snow, but we can't, you have this. Can you play that? So, um, some of you may have seen this before, I'm very proud of this, we have a flower on our, on one of our old buses and, um, our maintenance guys, John and Kevin, the driver to clean the yard, they help out with grounds and, you know, get the air cleaned out before we're ever doing massive. If any of you are in the area when they're doing the snow removal, it's really amazing to watch every vehicle out of the spot, park it on the outside of the parking lot and grounds goes in, they clear all the snow, they have a loader, they move it, it's really a lot. And next year I'm going to ask for, um, an morning over the yard. Cut down on overtime. So, um, I'm not going to do these slides.
So this just kind of gives you an, uh, an understanding of why it's important that we have a fleet replacement plan, uh, obviously to protect the district from large spikes in purchases that Mary described earlier. So if you look at that 2001, 2002 school year, we're now reaching the point where those buses are now falling out of service. In 1819, you saw 18 vehicles that were disposed of that year. Uh, the majority of them fall in that category of, of those older buses and, uh, pretty soon they're, they're all going to be removed. You saw that there are only six remaining, I believe. But that, obviously that inconsistency causes spikes in, in purchases and in disposals. But that, obviously, that inconsistency causes spikes in, in purchases and in disposals, and obviously, our goal is to level that, you know, through a fleet replacement plan with consistent purchases each year, which is depicted in those out years. And we're now seven years into our fleet replacement plan, we're already seeing that starting to normalize and, and limit our costs. And as we get into our, the budget presentation, you'll see, as Mary described, the reduction in our repair costs and in our parts cost. So, that's reflected in the budget in terms of, you know, reductions in, in budgetary savings. Over time, there will be no impact on the budget whatsoever, because we'll be replacing, or I should say, the, the payment for the, the buses from five years ago are completely paid off and replaced by the new buses. So, there would be no incremental cost, and actually, we'll get to that in, in another slide. So, early, we said that these are aided by New York State, so we can receive transportation aid on these purchases. Our transportation aid ratio is up to forty, almost 49 percent, so it almost works as a buy one, get one free, get one free deal. We always defer the first payment to the following year, '21, '22, so there's no impact on the 2020, '21 budget. That's going to be hard to say over these, these years. So, there's no impact on, on next year's budget, this would first impact the '21, '22 budget. But as you see in the third bullet, the 15, 16 purchases will be falling off, they're going to be completely paid off, and then subsequently replaced by this new purchase. So, the net incremental cost of the bottom, bottom bullet, is actually only $3 or $2 to the average southeastern Patterson homeowner. So, again, the incremental cost is so low because we've already committed to this plan, the 15, 16 purchases are now paid off and being replaced with the new year. The reason why there is even a slight increase is because the 15, 16 purchases were at 480,000, this year's purchases are at 730,000. That's a small, small increase. And again, we receive state aid of about $86,000, or we will receive state aid of $86,000 each year on, on these purchases for the same five years in which they're paid off. So, again, I always revert back to long range financial planning, this shows, and the color shows up terribly on this, on this projector, it's actually, it shows up a little bit better on that, on that screen over there, but it just shows how over, you know, the course of five years, you know, we're, we're paying buses off, and they're, you know, completely paid off, and then being replaced by the new purchases. By '23, '24, there will be no incremental costs. The cost of the buses will be completely embedded within the budget, and there will be absolutely no additional cost on the, on the budget each year. As we, you know, continue to progress to a threshold of $750,000, which we began in the, in May of 2017.
So, those are the mechanics that take care of, and the maintenance staff that take care of the buses. I thought that it would be nice and appropriate to thank them, and, you know, for what a great job that they do in taking care of them, as well as the drivers, but I couldn't get them all together, we're supposed to get together and get her picture. But just to let you know that they really respect the vehicles, they take good care of them, they keep them clean, and they're well maintained, and I just wanted to thank you for your continued support, and giving me the opportunity to come up and speak every year. Thank you.
Okay, any proposition, two questions from the board?
With the new buses.
Not you.
With the new buses, there'll be the cameras, the bus arm cameras.
I knew you were going to.
GPS, all those regular things, I don't know about radios, that might be separately issued, but that's all part of the cost?
Okay, yes, so the, within, in the new buses, the dollars they have up there, that includes the, the camera system, which includes the stop arm camera that, you know, that's why I said not you. But I can answer questions for that, too. Yeah, that's, everything's included. One of them, we asked for air conditioning, but it has the warranties, I get the warranties, I know in the past warranties weren't purchased, but I think it's a good idea, we've had a few, we didn't have many issues with the buses last year prior to that, and I know you approved for me in earlier meetings, from my recommendations, I actually had gotten one of Bauer Diesel, the wheelchair vehicle that was purchased, probably, I think it was 2015. I fought with Leonard, and I got them to replace that vehicle for nothing, we were having issues, it kept breaking down, and that was a, sorry, I'm not a mechanic, what is that, engine, Cummins, Cummins engine that, you know, all the mechanics are like, oh, don't steer away from him. That thing broke down so many times, and I just kept documenting everything, and I got to a point where it was replaced with an unleaded vehicle that I'd never had a problem with. So, and back to your question, yes, comes with the camera, it comes with the, the child check, it comes with the warranty, everything's there, there's no added costs.
Let's see, the county is in discussion on getting bus arm cameras be written for everybody, and it may or may not be that private company that they were discussing on having a company come in and pay for all the cameras, which might not necessarily be a good thing, because that's a whole nother issue.
Yeah.
But maybe we should have discussion with the county, because, I mean, they'll be writing a law, and we're going to have a bunch of buses with our own cameras on them, not related to whatever they're setting up, so we might just be an island in ourself with these items that can't be used because they're not written into the law. But, I mean, that, that's, that's a sight. But, and with the state aid, it might not be this year, it might not be next year, but they're talking about changing some of the aid packages to find a way to screw aside a money in a different way, but one of them being transportation. So, while we get 50% now, roughly down the road, we might not. So, it might be better to buy an extra bus or two now, while we have the definitive cash coming in of 50%, so instead of nine buses, maybe 10, knowing that it is a smaller cost, and we're guaranteed 49% reimbursement, but if the budget stuff changes three or four years down the road, we might not be. So, maybe explain that.
That's a good idea. Also, I didn't answer your GPS. The GPS is built into the radio system that we have on the release, that, that's working out great, and that was really the, no additional cost, because we took advantage of the opportunity to incorporate that when we had the radios installed. So, every vehicle has camera, has radio, if the camera or the radio are not functioning, we'll keep it at the road until, keep it off the road until it's repaired, so we don't want to ever have an administrator request video surveillance on the, on the vehicle. So, the, the stop arm camera is a package of the inside, the dash, and everything as well. So, it's really not much, it wasn't much of an added cost of prior, before that was offered to us.
Maybe they can do a graphic for you on the back, stop, ready to stop, put something on the back of the new buses while you're getting them done.
Yeah, we're working on that.
I know, I really want.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And then, maybe we could look at if the extended bus arm things work, we could work them into these items of the new buses, they come with an extended bus arm.
Yeah, and not to keep everyone too long, but I attended a traffic safety board meeting about that. You know, I'm interested in it, I, you know, I want to see it happen, we don't really have many districts or companies or anyone using the extended stop arm. I do have some reservations about it, and it's not, it doesn't come standard equipment from the manufacturer, so that's a concern of mine, if they're not offering it. Also, has been altered for the ability to, it's a separate hand movement for the driver.
So, it's an additional thing they have to do.
Right, so that worries me, as you, I showed you videos of, you know, that, that one, and, you know, we're as good as that driver is, so I don't like to add too many tests to them, and it would have to be shut off or used, and, you know, and then I have just a few reservations about the user, and, you know, there's a lot that really has to be factored in for it to be working as well as, you know, it should be. But I definitely want to, in the process, I'm right now collecting some data on buses that are having cars go through their reds, and how many we are, and at the end of the month, kind of get it together, and get it, a stop arm, extended stop arm on one of my vehicles, and use it, and I have a location, and I'm very interested in using it, because there's enough room, you know, we have a pot and lake, we've got some tight roads, we don't want anybody, and we don't want to create an accident also by opening the arm as the car's going through, and it's all the way out there, and now, you know, we have a bus accident to address because we've had, you know, impact. So, yeah, we'll be getting to that point, where we're, we're going to get it on, and see how that works, and then compare the data, and also, as we spoke at the safety board meeting, that if we want to file for grants, we would need all of that data and to, you know, to file for the grant, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Buy it into work. Yeah, thank you. Mary, I just want to say, thank you for the great job you do, and please thank your entire department for that.
I really appreciate it, I thank them all the time.
Hey, so, kind of switching gears, we're moving on to the, you can say, I forget. We're going to be going over, we're now getting into the expenditure side of our budget, so we've pretty much covered most of our revenues in terms of the tax cap, state aid, those two components make up about 95% of our revenues. We're going to talk about the other local revenues, which make up another, you know, 3% as well as our fixed cost. So, again, joined by Mary Smith, our supervisor of transportation, and Glenn Friar, our director of facilities is here as well, so he's going to be reviewing the facilities component of our budget, Mary's going to review our transportation budget, and then I'm going to wrap it up with the borrowing debt and revenues. To the right, let's go.
Trying to get out of here.
Okay, just a brief follow up with you, there are seven buildings, seven buildings in the district with totally over 500,000 square feet. There's 4,000 individuals that are in and out of the buildings daily, and the campus right now is a little over 200 acres of grounds, fields, and wooded area, and there are 500 plus after school and community events each year. That number of 500 is actually, is a high number compared to what I've been used to in the past, even in size ratio, your, your public does use your buildings quite, quite a lot. The, first of all, I want to thank Victor very much for helping with the, the, doing the budget this, this year, because being new to it, I feel like today's four months from being here in the district. It's, it was helpful in seeing, you know, where things were. Salaries, we're just doing a 1.3% increase, we're going from 2,763,000 to 2,798,000, so $36,000 increase. Equipment, we jumped up a bit more, we went from 15,000 to 25,000, a $10,000 increase. Reason being on that is, there's one item that we're looking to purchase, which we're hoping to save a lot of man hours, it happens to be a cherry auto scrubber, and I'll go a little bit into that as we get into the presentation. So, there's a net increase of 67%. Contractual items, which are training conferences, uniform schools, and reverts and auto insurance, that's maintaining level at 250,000. Utilities, we, we were expecting, and it has not been finalized yet, but we're expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of possibly an increase of 24% from 2016. With, with that though, we really took a very, very close look at projected outcomes of utilities between electric and gas, and without really using this current year, because we were very fortunate where we were going, we went back with the free previous with that, and we use that to project where we are. Also, I have enrolled a school into a couple of programs that will create a little bit of revenue back into it. One is a benchmarking service, which we're be trying to set the footprint for where we stand with our urban footprint and our buildings, and seeing the cost of operation, and it also opens us up, us up to availability of them helping us do some work with GTR motors and things like that, so that'll have a great benefit to the district. And then the other thing is a demand response program. It was kind of a no brainer, they said just by participating in, we could generate income of approximately $18,000 to the school district, which, and if we are very aggressive with what we do, we can increase that, but there is no penalty if we fail to mess with that. We do, and I can penalize with fines or anything. Renovations, repairs, again, oh, so anyway, we're, we're only looking at a 4% increase, we're holding our number pretty much at a level from previous year on that. Repair renovations, we're taking a bit of a jump there. We're looking to do minor repairs in the buildings to help brighten things up a little bit. We're spending, I'll, I'll mention as you go through, but in the high school, we, we do in the gymnasium, everything to help improve things there. Yeah, I'll, I'll take this, this top one. So, the SRO contract, as you know, we have four SROs in our school buildings, as well as one SPO at Brewster High School. We traditionally have accounted for the SRO contract in the instruction area of our budget, after going and having guidance provided by State Education Department, where we're reclassifying it to the operations and maintenance budget. So, you see that, you know, last year, there was no budget, of course, in the operations maintenance bu, budget for the SRO contract. We're moving it there for 2021, which makes up, you know, the majority of the total bottom line increase in the on end budget. Again, we have four SROs, one in each school building, and SPO at Brewster High School. We have a cost sharing arrangement with Potting County, where they contribute 50% of the cost for the SROs at the high school and middle school. The SRO for JFK is an 83-17 split, where the district pays 83%. It's a weird number, the weird number is because 10/12ths is 83%, so they're, you know, they're in district 10/12ths of the year, September to June, so therefore, the district pays, you know, 10/12ths of the cost, and the county pays 2/12ths of the cost. The fourth SRO at CB Star, which was just an addition in this current 1920 school year, when we approached the county in requesting the SRO, the county's response was that because they don't have SROs just hanging out waiting to be assigned to school districts, they had to go out and hire, you know, more staff. And then in doing so, they didn't have a need for this, for the SRO in the summer, so the school district is absorbing 100% of the cost of the SRO for CB Star. Finally, the remainder is the special patrol officer at Brewster High School. As we, you know, we've discussed over the years, SPOs are typically retired law enforcement, law enforcement folks, and they're, you know, therefore, they're, you know, not active duty, they're not able to make arrests, but they are armed, which is important, but then they come in at a reduced cost because the, the county is relieved of paying pension costs, health insurance, and things of that nature. So, in total, our, our SRO budget is increasing incrementally, really 480,000 from the previous year to 485,000 in 2021. Next, next line down is general service contracts, which is radio leases, refuse, removal, fire, and bird alarm monitoring, and critical systems monitoring. That's a, a very minor increase, we're going from 608,000 to 619, $11,000 increase for a 1.8% increase. Service and repair contracts, that's maintaining the same at, at 280,000. Material supplies, a little bit of an increase for, which is for cleaning supplies, maintenance, materials, salt, sand, grassy, land, moldings. One of the things that made that jump up, the 3.6% is a program that we're doing on to help improve the fields, which I'll cover just in a few minutes. And then, BOSI service is going from 115,000, 118,000, $3,000 increase, or, or 2.6%. So, the budget goes from 5,404,000 to 6,37,000, a 634,000 dollar increase for 11.7%. So, again, the, the majority of that increase is obviously attributable, attributable to the reclassification of the SRO contract, so if not for the reclassification, the increase in the on end budget would be, you know, closer to 2, or 22, 3%. As, you know, Glenn mentioned, I'm sure he's going to speak some more about it, he's only been here for four months, but he certainly made an impact, and I, I believe the building principals would be able to, to speak to that. He went on a listening tour to go to each building and ask, you know, what are your needs, including meeting with Mr. Verardo, our director of athletics, to find out how can he assist, and you see reflected in Glenn's budget, the investment in, in the fields, and you see turf blanket out on field four, that was something that Glenn immediately brought. That was something that Glenn immediately brought to us, a recommendation that we hope will be fruitful in a couple of months when we, when we pull it off, or sooner, a couple of weeks probably, as well as improvements to the facilities in his, in his repairs and maintenance budget that increased a little bit. Repeat today, it's already mostly green running, the blanket. So like I say, I've been here for four months and started out with preparing for the budget by going around and talking to the principals. That's really not a good idea. It costs me way too much money. They, they have a lot of ideas that they wanted to do, but it's, it was really nice. Like I say, being new to the district, have a fresh set of eyes. It really allowed me to go and look around, ask, find out what they were looking to do going around. Couple of things that we did on our own in-house, we went, we switched from our general cleaning standards, we switched over to a microfiber-based cleaning system. Most people, if they, if they're not familiar with microfiber, it's just a, it's a better rag that holds more dirt and is reusable. The rags that we, we purchased have a between six hundred and a thousand washing life cycle, which is compared to a normal cotton rag of somewhere around a hundred fifty, possibly two hundred. But more importantly is the ability that does in cleaning allows a reduction in the amount of chemicals that you need, and it's just a, just better overall clean. Didn't know much about the bubbly bears, but they could not keep up with the level of, or the amount of clean that we do. So we did purchase washing machines for them to be done, run by the custodians during their shift, but there's still other things that they do for us, so to keep, keep them working well. Also involved is, we made a couple of purchases of equipment. One happens to be a pro press. What that is, is that's a plumber's tool. Currently, the way the school district operates, they do not allow use of torches during the student day in case there's a trip of a fire alarm or got a bit of fire during it. So what they were doing in the past, in order to put two pipes together, they were using something that's called a shark light, which is not quite a permanent fix, although it is a good fix to get you out of the problem. It's not as strong as sweating a, a pipe. And there are limitations to sweating a pipe. It has to be completely dry before you do it. What we did is we purchased a pro press. It was a little bit of an expensive tool, right around three thousand dollars. But this, this tool, you can use under any conditions. You still prepare a pipe like you're getting wet, you're just wet, but it doesn't have to be dry. The water can actually be gushing out. You simply slide the fitting on, and it's a, a device, it kind of looks like a cordless drill, except it will crush evenly all around, and it makes a permanent seal. And what that does is, you can do it during the day, there is no interruption in class time. So our maintenance staff is actually able to carry on plumbing repairs while the kids are in the building. They didn't have to do this on any overtime. Just by, since we purchased the tools between installing, plumbing for the washing machines and doing some drain repairs that we were looking to do around the district for availability and cleaning them out, we probably would have come in the neighborhood between ten and twelve thousand dollars in plumbing repairs, which we simply did in-house for probably in the neighborhood of about four thousand dollars between material and, and the tools. So it's worked out very, very well. And the best part about it is we're using our own staff, so we're not having to go outside and use outside vendors. Our people, but our, excuse me, really can't call them our people, they're, they're your people. They were here before I got here. The selection of the people that are currently working as, as staff are, these are very high caliber people. One thing I have done is I've asked them, what do you want to do? What can we do? And they said, well, I'd love to be able to do this, and, you know, let them run the ball. It's just amazing, the, the knowledge of people that's there. So.
Can I answer?
Yes.
There are also fingerprinters. Right? Also, start by, we work around children. If you brought someone from the outside, they're fingerprinted and approved by, see which.
Contracts. But just so you know, every contractor that comes through are vetted through our, our system. So we do not have people that are unknown inside the district. In fact, most of the time, that a vendor is on grounds when they're working with my people. My people are with them or within close proximity. We do not let anybody into the district and say, good, we'll see you in, you know, three hours and come back. We're always checking up on, always making sure that where they're supposed to be, and no one is able to come and enter a building. I, I have vendors that have come and meet me all, all the time, and as a result, I've gotten to meet a lot of the SROs, face things, because that's what, that's what they say until they're, they're brought into the building with us. I've broken down that presentation just to talk a little bit about what's being done with the current budget as far as the remainder of the funds that we have for this year, and also offsetting the things that we're looking to do this year. Can I talk about pension? About what? Is that pension? I can't. Okay. Sorry. But you can answer that, because we do have to get to that tonight. Okay, okay. Sorry. Yeah. There's, as in speaking with Mr. Zepplin, there's a gazebo plant for, in, in the courtyard. There's, there's already been a pad that's been bored in place, but we'll be doing that in-house by buying materials and doing construction. We're hoping to get that done over the break coming up in April. One of the things that went by is we were looking to do, air conditioning was part of the budget for JFK. Fortunately, there was a budget of two million dollars, and, and bids came in at, at three point five. What we're doing is we're going to be in a combination of some electrical services by an outside vendor, and we're going to be installing window units in the classroom over the next coming weeks to help air condition spaces that don't have it. But it'll be a cost effective, we won't be going over the old world, we'll be in, in the neighborhood of about forty thousand dollars. We'll spend on district funds in order to do this. It is a, a good thing, though, because from what I'm hearing from the counterparts, there currently is legislation to limit the room temperatures in classrooms to eighty-two degrees. So without air conditioning, you would actually have to be canceled classes. So hopefully, we'll be headed back before that becomes a fact. The, just a minor little thing, we're purchasing a shade sale for CB Star Playground 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 Playground. It's out the middle of nowhere. If you stand out there, it's just pure heat. So this will give us some shades for, for the kids to sit under while they're, while they're playing with the equipment. For, for, for the upcoming budget, we'll be redoing the, the main entrance in the lobby, removing the, what used to be, I guess, a reader desk, and there's these fox carved things that, places that were originally intended for children to sit at, at CB Star. I'm sorry, thank you very much, at CB Star. It was really designed for children to sit on, but it ended up being more of a jungle gym and a sort of a supervision problem. So that'll be done along with, there's just two classrooms actually across from the main office that are still requiring AC, so that will get done this year. At H812s, currently with the rest of, some of the money spent this year, we'll be providing additional lighting in the pit area. Some of the problem that they often, they say it's very dark in front of the stage, so that'll be done. We're doing some additional door replacements down in the boys' locker room area that will increase the security and also help in the egress. Right now, it's not adequate for, for the student organization. You have to open the door to get out. It has to be done in a one-step function. And we'll be replacing some lighting controls for the stage area and wells for that. For the high school, currently, right now, we just finished receiving bids, and hopefully we'll be doing our speaker upgrade for, in, in the pack for the performances that are coming up in, in March. The, just so you know, the pack is twenty years old. Since it's been in, there's been no major renovations done to that, and you're at the point where things are going over that, that will need to be redone over the, over the coming years. So this is like the first stage of improving the sound system, and there'll be things that will be working, be able to find out which is the most beneficial in order so that it keeps running at, at its best possible performance level. We're also purchasing a scoreboard for the track area. Right now, there's, I believe it's a lacrosse and, is it? No. Definitely at least lacrosse, but there'll be.
Field hockey.
Field hockey for, for that to be done there. But in the coming up, for next year's budget, the, the gym will be going through a, pretty much a full facelift. We're going to be doing a full sanding on the floor going back. We're, we'll step away the new, new trend. If you look at any of the colleges and universities, instead of using paint on the floor, everything's being stained. What that does is, you, in the past, you were basically painting a wood floor, and then you go through expansion and contraction, and in a very short amount of time, all the paint seems to have chipping looking and things like that, where the stain, you're actually staining individual boards, so it can move as much as it wants. You'll never really see a distortion from it. With that, we'll be redoing the bear logo in the center. I'm going to show some mockups with the original bear that we currently have, and also some other sports-related bears that maybe, you know, we'll get people together in some sort of committee so they can judge. As you can see over here, just, there's been several different bears over, over the past years. It's something that I have in mind that I want to offer out there, is a more sports-like bear, as opposed to the symbol, but if that's what is chosen, that, that's easy enough to go with. The, also, it'll be replacement of padding in the gym and upgrading the lights to LVT. So you'll have a brighter gym for that. One of the other things is currently is the AC and server room, the server room that's in the high school happens to be back in the district. They have well over five hundred thousand dollars worth of wood in there. And if those systems go down, and they are aging, it can be critical for the, for the district, because if they, they go down, things will pretty much grind to a wall, because, as you see, everyone, you know, works with technology in front of them. It's all. AC server, doing some minor floor replacements, but we're, we're choosing better materials for flooring, which require less maintenance. We're getting away from a lot of wax and things like that, all the LVT. Oh, the floors, I've seen in districts. We're going to be paving the area behind the gym for the senior area, and also giving them that shade cell. And then the last thing I was mentioning about is cherry floor scrubber. What that is, that's a, that's, that's an item that you may see customers do, it's, I got, it's, it's, it's a floor scrubber, but this is one that actually that you can stand on and ride. It moves much quicker. You get twice enough floor coverage, and you experience a lot less fatigue by the people operating with these equipment. So they'll basically be more productive and more energy to do better. And then lastly is, not only this year, but also next year, we're undertaking a field maintenance program. We're going from your traditional fertilizer, which you're very limited to use, which you can use in the watershed area, but we're going with organic-based fertilizers, which are useful, you know, with the watershed. You know, make sure that's clear with the DP. And we're also doing soil conditioners. Those two products alone, compared to like a traditional fertilizer that you may use, like everyone talks about the Scots program, and you may use it on your, your lawn at home, that goes down in the last three weeks, and when it's done, there's nothing left behind. With an organic-based material, there are things that are left behind that always improve the soil or the ability of the plant to divide that area. It just, the longer you use it, the, the better the turf gets. Between the fertilizer and conditioners, you really should be doing that. And then one of the last things is, I know that the district had brought up and brought into field resting programs, but they was just like, you know, here, just to stay off the field. That's, that's not really the best way to do it. I've been speaking with quite a few people. They were very specific about when that field has to come out of service so that you can fertilize seed, and you can get growth in your first year before that, that field goes to sleep in the winter, so that you actually see results coming in spring, so that you end up getting better than if you're not using the field. So the, whatever. As, as we start doing that in a rotational basis, you'll be able to take fields out of service and improve that, that when it's just after the service, it's a nosebit different than there, you know, you have improvement to the field. And one of the things that we're just doing, and really looking forward to this year, is the use of turf blankets. It allows for better germination of seed earlier, green up of the grass. So it's, it's mainly used on, like baseball diamonds and things like that, for, you know, inside the center of the play. But we, instead of buying one square, and then we've done that, we've bought two packs, and we were able to cover the crown of field, I believe it's four, that was recently taken out due to the piping and things like that, but we fertilized and seeded and put down the blankets. So it's already green in the shell, so it should look very good this year. That's it. Sorry, just talked so long. As you can see, in such a short period of time, Glenn has really taken an ear to, you know, not only our, you know, internal administrators, but also in the community, and working with our community groups, Brewster Sports Foundation, to help assist us in, you know, field resting and improvement plans. And obviously, Glenn is not short of having ideas, so I do appreciate you in, in sharing all of that with us. And it's not often that Glenn gets to present to us, so I apologize for the length of it, but it is important to highlight all of the many, many things that goes into the facilities management. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for finishing up before my next hot flash. I just want to add, like, a couple, couple concerns that the board, anytime that the board has concerns about different things, I'll talk to Victor, and you're already on it. So I just want to thank you and thank your department as well.
Thank you. That sounded very informative and details. I want to say it's been a while, but thank you.
That's what I was going to say. I mean, it was, you know, there was a lot in it, but we don't, over the last few years, we haven't heard enough. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
So back to transportation. I said to Glenn, thank you for finishing up before my next hot flash. Well, it's horrible being, you know, getting over fifties or like that. So transportation, as we showed you before, we have, we're at three streets, gas and truck vehicle week. The district is forty-five square miles. We drive one point five million miles or driven annually, and we service to over thirty-five private and special ed schools. So although the district's forty-five square miles, we do transport private schools up to fifteen miles out of district and also special needs, special ed placements out of district up to fifty miles. So, you know, we're near, we are right now, currently, we have, I believe, sixteen private schools we're transporting to, and the rest is all out of district. I want you to know that I do work very hard on consolidating, putting them together. A lot of times, the times don't work. I do, you know, I really have my finger on the pulse of making sure that I do what I can to avoid the use of an extra driver, monitor, and so, you know, up three percent. Is that going to be my raise?
No, but what I, what I can answer that, I want to thank Cardi Campbell, our president of SEIU, also one of our bus drivers. Thank him and your department for everything that you do. They do incredible work. One thing with the transportation department that we've been working on over the course of the few years, in concert with, with the SEIU, is re-establishing full-time bus drivers, because for a period of years back in, you know, I'm going to say twenty fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, we got to a point where we attempted to reduce the number of full-time bus drivers through attrition, and then hire two part-timers to fill one part-timer's role. The reality was that operationally, that was impossible, and we never got to the full complement of staffing that we identified as a goal. It was just simply unrealistic, and operationally, it was almost unmanageable for, for Mary, and really a testament to her and her department for getting us through that. We're now up to a full-time complement of seventy bus drivers, which is a, a good, you know, good.
We're now up to a full-time complement of 70 bus drivers, which is a good, you know, good space for us to be in. Again, it was almost unmanageable several years ago. And again, I thank Artie Campbell and the S C U for working with us through negotiations to get us to that.
So our garage equipment, last year we had requested and we were given $135,000 for any vehicle wood replacement. This year I did propose, I think another, about 130. Right now we're holding off on that. It was for replacement of the fuel tanks, the, not the diesel pumps, the unleaded pumps and the unleaded fuel tank itself. Right now currently we have a 3,000 gallon unleaded tank and as, you know, that I'm now starting to purchase more unleaded vehicles. I'd like to see us get to at least an 8,000 gallon tank that we have. I think I did price out for 10 and a little pump, so I hope to have a future conversation with Victor and discussing maybe taking the pumps out of the picture, reducing my request for the tank if we, you know, if we can. Hopefully talk about that. Contractual operations is down. This is training, medical exams, tolls, uniform toll reimbursements and student field trips. Like I said before, I really keep my, you know, I'm very active in what's being spent out of my department. I did, you know, down to the uniform guy, I haggled with them. I put the bid out, I think, two or three times and I finally got someone to come in and actually cut the cost in half for the uniform, for the uniform contract, sorry. Contractual repairs is down because we're not, you know, we have newer buses and we don't need to outsource bodywork and other items like that. And the diesel and gasoline is up 3%, but that's really not anything that we can control. We can only just try to project. And as I mentioned earlier, we do, every year annually, participate in the cooperative bid that's hosted by Hudson, the local Hudson Desert, I think it's Clarkson. Radio lease and insurance, this is up and we did add to the radio lease a couple, I did add a couple of things since we originally set up the lease. We have additional channel two where the drivers can turn to and speak to us privately where the drivers are on the road on channel one, so they can just switch to two. And if they have something going on and we don't want the students and the other buses to hear what's going on, you know, it makes it private and confidential. We also added on spoken chef and we're in the final stages now. Probably this weekend, Conco will be in to add an additional channel onto the radios within each bus for the ability for the driver to just switch to that channel and speak to a 911 dispatch. And of course, the insurance, I can't, we have no control of that. We do have more, the buses are newer, I'm sorry. So that does potentially raise the cost. Bus parts is down and that would be attributed to our inventory. We, you know, everything's accurate. Like I said before, we're not storing parts. We, the buses are newer, we don't need many replacements. And if I said, you know, and I don't know if you spoke to any of them, I'll tell you like, no one orders anything without me saying it's okay to order. I want to make sure that we knew it before we ordered. Contractual and the garage has gone down. That's because we moved the G P S into the radio lease. So we've kind of eliminated that cost in that category. Supplies in the garage have gone up. Office cleaning and can supplies, that's clearly just inflation. And the contract and the O C services, that's something that we keep when we open contracts. We have some students within the district that are out of displacements and they do attend two different programs in two different schools. So we'll drop them all at one school and O C's will do the shuttle, you know, and get them over to another school and then we'll take them over from the other school in the afternoon so we don't actually have to send a driver out in the middle of the day to go make that, you know, transfer. So, you know, I'm down. My budget's down. Can't ask for more than that. Thank you. Thank you for having me. And I'm gonna hand this over to Victor and I'm going to go to bed. Have a great night.
So again, thank you, Mary, and thank you, Glenn, again. It's not often that they get an opportunity to present to the board and explain. I mean, they're really just sharing just surface level of the amount of things that they deal with on a day-to-day basis. So again, I'm appreciative of Mary and Glenn for coming on, sharing greater detail of the things that they're involved in because it's really interesting if you have a minute to spend some, just do one more time. So now moving on to really boring stuff, the debt service portion of our budget. So debt is a means for the district to enhance its facilities and we really need to look at it and think of it in the same way that we think about our home mortgage. It's an investment in our home. So debt for the school district is an investment in our home. We, of course, you know, work with a finance committee. So we have a finance committee that's established and members of the board and members of the community participate on the finance committee and, you know, each year we're reviewing our debt and, you know, our, you know, financial planning for building improvements. In this upcoming 2021 school year, we are all aware that we're issuing a bond to finalize and complete the payoff of the 2014 district-wide renovation project. So again, I always reference long-range financial planning and everything that we do. It all circles back to that. This coming summer, as I mentioned in my administrative comments, we're going to be appointing an architect firm to complete the building condition survey and update our long-range capital plan, which goes hand in hand, of course, with financial planning. One thing that seems to come up often with our finance committee, budget advisory committee, audit committee, community members, is the level of debt that the district is in. So New York State local finance law actually governs constitutional debt limits. It's a value of, it's 10% of full value of all properties within Brewster Central School District. That value's about 3.2 billion, 10% of which is 320 million. So therefore, 320 million is our debt ceiling. So Brewster's outstanding bond anticipation notes and bonds is about 63 million or 20% of the debt limit. So we are absolutely nowhere near, you know, maxing the debt limit nor do we have any intention of reaching our debt limit in the future. So again, just to put it in perspective, we are nowhere near our debt limit. But with that said, the debt service budget is increasing for next year. So 2021 is a unique year because we're issuing that bond. And we're actually being doubled up in principal and interest payments for both the new bond and the existing bond anticipation notes which are being converted. And the reason for that is we make payment in July for the borrowing that's happening right here in the 1920s school year. So in July, we're paying off that bond anticipation note, principal and interest. In that same move, we're issuing a bond for the payment over the course of the 2021 school year, paying principal and interest payments likely, you know, spread out over six months. So in all likelihood, we'll have a payment due in October and another payment due in the spring in April. So you, again, you'll see an increase in construction bonds. We do have debt falling off, so it's a net increase of 805,000, but that's also taking into consideration some debt that's falling off the books. Again, all of this is discussed in greater detail with our finance committee. So you see the combination of the two really represents the lion's share of the increase in the total debt service budget. Installment purchase agreements is down $89,000. So five years ago, the district entered into an installment purchase agreement to purchase wireless devices to install in each of the school buildings in preparation for the Smart Schools Bond Act, which we knew was coming down the line. So we wanted to make sure that we had an infrastructure that could support all of the devices that we were going to be purchasing through the Smart Schools Bond Act. So that installment purchase agreement is reaching its fifth year. I think we started it in September, so there is a little bit of a rollover. So our cost for 2021 is just $16,000 and then it's extinguished. Energy performance contracts, we have an energy performance contract that we then entered into, let me say 13 years ago. We have two years remaining on that and that will be paid in full in '21, '22. But the payment remains constant each year and there's no increase there. So again, in total, our debt service budget is increasing 965,000 or 13%. You may say, well, that's alarming, but it's not. And the reason for that is that we have a debt service fund that we use to offset this increase. So you'll see on the revenue side of our budget in a moment, a reflection of the debt service reserve fund that's offsetting that increase. So there's no impact on the instructional side of our budget whatsoever. Looking ahead, in '21, '22, I wanted to show the decrease in our band payments. So you see here, our band payments are pretty constant and fixed at that level. And moving forward to '21, '22, you see a huge drop off in our bond anticipation notes. It's actually about $1.5 million. So you'll see a significant reduction in '21, '22 in terms of our total debt service payments. But again, 2021, the next year's budget represents a double up of paying the bond anticipation notes as well as the bonds. Again, that's mitigated by an increase in our inter-fund transfer from the debt service fund. You see a million dollar increase that represents the funds that we're using from the debt service fund to offset the increase in the debt service expense. Again, so there is no impact on the instructional side of our budget whatsoever. So with that said, all other, you know, portions of our local sources budget, again, a very small portion of our total revenue budget remain constant. Again, an increase of about $1 million to offset that increase in debt service costs once again. So there is no impact on the instructional side of our budget. So at this point, we have about 98% of our revenue budget established, which again is assisting us and allowing us to move forward in budget development on the expenditure side of the budget. Tonight we've heard the fixed cost portion of our budget, transportation and facilities and debt service. At the March 10th budget presentation, we're gonna get into staffing, enrollment and class size projection, which of course is the most important component of our budget. We're working with our budget advisory committee. You know, the drum that they're beating is that, you know, they want to see increases in staffing to lower class sizes. Obviously, that's been a major goal of Dr. Vanlonde and Dr. Gosh in addressing that issue and it was, you know, heard loud and clear in the community forum earlier this month. So you'll see that reflected in next, our next budget presentation. Beyond that, we have two more budget advisory committee meetings. Two more budget meetings and the all-important budget vote on May 19th. So as it gets closer, we'll start promoting the budget more and making sure that people get out and are informed of our budget. As always, please visit our website. All of our presentations, we always upload to our website. So if you don't have an opportunity or you'd like to refer back to it, it'll be up here through your viewing. And once again, I wanted to thank Mary and Glenn for coming out to share, you know, a greater level of detail in their support service budgets, which are really important to us. Thank you.
Just one. We have a little bit of solar in our district. Can you, is that showing like a good thing that we've done? Can we maybe do, look into a little more?
So we do have solar at J F K. And I know that Dr. Zambrolin has, you know, incorporated that into instruction. In terms of, you know, cost savings, I know that it's supporting some of the new equipment that was installed. So we expanded the air conditioning system at J F K as we did that expansion. And I know that the solar is offsetting some of that cost. And we also have a monitoring system that actually shows us how much. I'm not totally familiar with that and, you know, Glenn being here for a few months, he may not have had a chance to dive into it. And Dr. Zambrolin is here if you would like to be...
No, I just have to be tonight. Just something, it seems like there's always, you know, talk in the world about solar and how it...
It does offset some of the electricity in the building and there's a monitor actually in the lobby of the school. There's a section of it where you can see how it impacts the building on a real-time basis. So it does have some impact, but it's not a huge solar array, remember.
Is it because we don't have enough? Like if we have more solar panels, we have, you know, a ton of, we just put on a lamp. It's not even a roof either.
And we, over the years, we've been constantly approached by solar companies asking if we could do, you know, solar panel because as Glenn mentioned, we own, you know, so a substantial amount of land. However, we're also in D E P wetlands. So that was all, you know, that was one of the prohibitions to us installing ground mount solar panels. But anytime when you're renovating or replacing a roof, there's always an opportunity to look into it. And, you know, through our building condition survey, we're gonna identify the roofs that are gonna need to be replaced. And I'm pretty sure that J F K's roof over the, you know, of course, the next five years or so is gonna need to be replaced. So we could consider an expansion of that. And of course, you know, we would work with mechanical engineers to make sure that we're, you know, doing, you know, that it's gonna be cost-effective. Because of course, you know, just like with your own home, there's a payback period and you want to make sure that payback period, you know, is reached within a reasonable amount of time because of course there's additional costs. But absolutely, anytime, you know, we're looking to replace or repair a roof, you know, solar is of course a consideration.
The governor currently has a bill before the Senate that's to greatly reduce the cost of things coming into the state so that they'll be more beneficial. So that he wants to do, he has a carbon data thing, what it is, but it's in the very near future. Mike constituents have been talking a lot about what's going on and there's been a lot of programs that they're formulating around. There's been a few stumbling blocks, you know, forest school dressers to become involved and that's being put out so that they can see what they can do to incorporate more forest schools. So, oh, and you do also do have hot water, salt on your H H water supply.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Move on to public remarks. If anyone has anything they'd like to comment on specifically to the action items on the agenda this evening, please feel free to come up. You'll have three minutes. State your name and just the board. No one? No one? Okay. We'll move on then to action items. Action item number one is the approval of audit of residency verification program. So I can comment a little bit on that. No one else have anything? We had a work session. So actually, this started because, I mean, it was some, a couple meetings ago. This was on the agenda and it was becoming a lengthy conversation. So I recommended we move it to a work session so that we could have a more engaging conversation about it and people wanted to come watch us there. They could. They didn't. So just to recap our work session and if you all have, you know, notes or remember what we talked about that night. But basically, we discussed cost, you know, who would we use? We discussed probably it'd be best to use a third-party auditor, someone who we're not currently obviously engaged with. What would be the purpose of it? What are they looking at, targeting? Can we even find someone who's experienced in this to be able to do a proper audit of us? And, let's see, what else? That we discussed, some of the other points that came up were that this year, right now, that we're in is essentially year one because last year was really implementing the work that came out of the task force, the conversations with S E D and implementing a lot of stuff. And we have a new...
Residency officer.
Thank you. In place also this year and, let's see what else. We discussed that there is, we're not gonna audit. We, you're clear on our procedure and our process and our paperwork because that was fine tuned with S E D holding our hand. So then it really would be an audit of are we as a district and the people involved adhering to the work that we outlined that needs to be done the way it needs to be done? And being that we have a new residency officer, we're in year one, not since year one, but kind of really full student head this year with it, that, you know, possibly we should consider letting this year play out, see where we're at then, and then look at it. So we went back and forth, I think, in the discussion. And, yeah, so that was kind of the gist of it. There were pros and cons to doing it now and later. You know, we're in it. What are we really evaluating and what do we... So whoever wants to add, because we have the discussion in comments, actually, I'm sorry, I have to clarify it and then we'll do the discussion. So I just need a motion and a second. Carrie, you want? Thank you. So now if anyone wants to add to the discussion we had that night, yeah.
Okay. One thing that we discussed was that part of the residency verification program is ensuring that those students with short-term leases, with, you know, expiration dates, maybe even within a school year or something like that, how we're able to follow up on that, how we're able to track it and how our residency officer follow up when those various leases expire at different times. when those various leases expire at different times of the year. So, you know, one of the things that I at least thought about in terms of an audit would be, I'd like to see some results on that before we audit it because I think that's a big part of it, of the program. And I don't think we've had a long enough period of time to audit our ability to monitor the expiration of these leases. So that was one reason why I thought an audit should be delayed at least, you know, maybe into next year at some point that makes sense, so that that part of it can also be considered.
So I would just say, when I first, when this topic was sort of first broached, you know, my thought was we spent a lot of money on this process, and we probably should make sure that we are. We're doing it right, was my thought process. And the point that was made that I think really does resound with me now is the fact that the process is over, and we're not going to go back to the process of the residency verification that started and stopped within the one school year. Now it becomes, when we audit something, we should learn something from it, and we should take what we learned and apply it to where we're going forward. And like the president alluded to, we were very closely monitored in how we went through this process and how we got to what we asked for and how we asked for it. It obviously did come up in all of the conversations with all of our attorneys as far as the process that we went through and how we went through it. But we really were kind of the trailblazers. So who is going to go back and look over and say, we did something right or wrong? The process has survived its implementation. It has now ended as far as the residency verification part that we went through. And, you know, I'm now more of the minds, I now understand much more that if, when we audit the process, it should be, what are we doing now? And what can we learn from that to apply going forward? The money that we've spent is the money that we've spent. We've gotten to where we are, and so now it's, what are the results of this audit going to be? And if it improves the way we do things and make sure that we stay out of SED's crosshairs, and we absolutely make sure that every kid who lives in this district is entitled to the education that they're entitled to, and every kid who is not in this district, we have every control in place to potentially not put that burden on our taxpayers if we're doing that. And for all intents and purposes, we were audited throughout that system. So to do another standalone audit, I'm not as concerned about it as I might have been previously with that.
Yeah, we need to just maybe have more of a, not more of a presentation towards the end. Give a residency officer a period of time. Even the centralized register, she's relatively new. Is there a way, maybe towards the end of the year or beginning of next year, to look back and say, this is what did? We have our database, but we followed up. What's the percentage of people that aren't giving us new leases? How are we following up on that? More of just a refresher course, just to keep in mind what's been done. If there seems to be a hole, we have two sets of new eyes on it, and they can go, well, we should do this now also. And I'm sure there's just the things that they've done already. They've mentioned things. People have mentioned the database. Well, how is it following up with that, just to make sure it's done? Plus, there is no, all our orders is handled by outside accounts. There's no group out there that audits residency programs. It doesn't exist. So you have to bring in a group, train them on it, show them how we do it, and then have to verify what we told them is right. So I don't know if we really get out of something. But if we could keep a eye on it, and just internally keep going through it, making sure it's done, and updating it as needed. The procedure aside, the SED has decided what we can and can't do. It's what we're doing, and if it totally can't do, how are we doing that?
I think we may have discussed, I know we discussed like who actually would do an audit of this nature. And I think it was brought up that it, and I view it this way. It almost seems like it would have to be a law firm, an independent law firm, not the district's lawyers. Because that's what it is. It's a law. And how are we implementing what the law is allowing us to do and what they're not allowing us to? So that's just one, I'm sure it can be done. It's just who would do it? To me, it seems like that would be something that a law firm would do. You know, but that's separate and apart from whether it should be done now, later, or at all.
Okay, so there aren't any other questions or thoughts on it? So it's written as an approval. I'm not sure how everyone feels exactly, but we'll still vote on it. So even if we voted no today, it doesn't mean that it can't be considered at a future time. Perhaps after a presentation and we look at it and go, you know, we have a reaction to that. Or, you know, we could go ahead, but then we have to figure out how to be actually doing how. So, okay, so we'll go to a vote, right? Sorry, I'm up to. All those in favor of doing the audit of the residency verification program at this time? Opposed? Seven, so we are, it failed. Zero seven, how do I say that? Zero seven. Okay. So action item number two, acceptance of donation extended bus stop arm.
So as Mary mentioned, while Nate Spence, our assistant supervisor of transportation, is willing to donate a stop-arm camera that he had in his prior career to the district. As Mary mentioned, she is recommending that we accept that donation, however, not immediately install it and still collect data and identify the best route to which, you know, this stop-arm camera should be installed, if it is installed at all. So I want to stress the caveats associated with accepting this gift in that it won't be installed, you know, immediately. We're really taking a thoughtful, pragmatic approach to bus stop-arm cameras just because it's new. You know, we need to make sure that it's, you know, DOT eligible, and that it's not presenting a safety hazard for motorists or our drivers, and most importantly, our students on the bus.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Eric and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, and we have the regular bus-arm cameras. The extended arm is basically one that goes off across two lengths of traffic. So you can't drive around at the time. That's the only purpose behind it. And obviously, it would be something new. I don't even know if it's used in New York State generally, but it's good to see that, just looking forward and give it a try and, you know, see if it can be done. That's above and beyond the regular bus-arm cameras.
We accept this? Is there a timeframe to put it on? I mean... Well, I think Mary described a little bit while we were up there is that she really wants to have the drivers first. She mentioned, you know, clickers. So they have through their, you know, through their bus system, they're able to notate events. So, and it's, you know, a simple clicker. So notating that event, they're able to track how many times they have issues with motorists passing the school bus. And it's, you know, it's really a judgment call. As I've been discussing this more with Mary. Because when a bus stops or slows to stop, you see the flashing yellow lights. At the time that the bus comes to a complete stop, some drivers will immediately throw out the sign. Other drivers will stay there for, you know, one or two counts because there might be a car that's, you know, approaching at 20 miles an hour, and they have to slam on their brakes in order to hit. So they're, right now, they're really trying to collect data to identify where are those areas that it's most prevalent, to identify where, you know, which buses or which bus should be equipped with this stop-arm camera. So I imagine she's going to want to collect that data over the next, you know, several weeks or so, and then review it, and then, you know, during that same time period, reach out to DOT and find out, you know, are we even able to install these things? I assume so. And then if so, then continue down that process. Also, as Scott knows, Mary's been in contact with Putnam County, and they've taken a real interest in anything that we can do to stop people from passing school buses. So I'm sure that they'll give us any assistance that we need in, you know, making sure that we're compliant with, you know, all the DOT regulations to get them installed. So long-winded answer, as soon as possible. But, you know, in all likelihood, probably over the course of the next several months.
I just didn't want to accept something that's going to sit on a shelf and not be installed.
Yeah.
Sadly, Mary didn't even want it.
Well, again, she's just, she's one thing cautious. She doesn't want to give a false expectation that this thing is going to be accepted and put on tomorrow, and it's going to save the day. It's, you know, she's cautiously optimistic that this will be a solution.
If it somehow doesn't meet some standard or something, we would just return the donation, I suppose?
Yeah, we could dispose of it or return it.
Does someone else maybe could? Okay.
Yeah, it's used in other states, but hasn't been used in the U.S. Ohio and a number of other states, and they've run through their DOT, and they found it acceptable. A lot do, we don't use it, but at least it's cleared the hurdle in other areas.
Thank you. I need a second, right? A motion and a second? I'm sorry, I'm starting to choke here. All those in favor of this session? Someone watch it now?
For one exception.
Are you in favor of this action item?
Yes.
So we're seven? All those opposed?
That's presidential, dude.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, action item number three, disposal of district property, technology equipment.
So again, this equipment is recommended for disposal by our technology department. And you'll see, I thought it was actually pretty comical going through the list of some of these items. There's a typewriter on there, a couple overhead projectors. And these are the residual items that were at Garden Street once we closed it. So Garden Street, we refer to as the Land Missed Toys. Over the years, anytime there was an equipment to be relocated, it would be, you know, stuck in Garden Street. Over the course of the past several years, Jim Tralor's really done a good job of inventorying our technology equipment and making sure that we dispose of those obsolete items like overhead projectors and tube televisions and things of that nature. So you'll see in this list that, you know, a number of items are just, you know, extremely old and recommended for disposal. In addition to a number of cell phones, the district is changing or changed carriers from AT&amp;T to Verizon, and in that exchange, is exchanging those cell phones or upgraded cell phones with Verizon service, which provides much better coverage in the district where we have, you know, dead spots in our own buildings with Verizon service. We don't have dead phones.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second? Motion? Danny, thank you. Krista, thank you. Questions or comments?
And the smart boards are just the ones that we've replaced that I would consider on?
Yeah, some of these smart boards, so there's different generations of smart board. Like, that's probably one of our oldest smart boards, which is why the, you know, the light is so bad on it. So over the course of, you know, many years, smart boards, the models have, you know, have changed. So some of those older models are not even used in any of our classrooms. And again, whenever we would take a smart board off of a classroom, we would save it for, you know, to use spare parts for other smart boards. So the ones that are listed are some of the oldest ones that aren't even used anymore for spare parts. So, you know, again, we would salvage them, but even the, you know, none of those boards exist in any of our school classrooms anymore.
Okay. I'm starting with Fay. Did you, motion and a second, discuss, to vote on that? Is this ready?
Yep.
Sorry. Thank you. I've got to stop hanging around kids, get me sick all the time. So all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Okay. Approval of MOA for VTA regarding JFK and CD Star interreals.
Sure. So this is a result of growing interest in CD Star to expand participation in the interreals program for grades three, four, and five. Previously, the interreal program consisted of 15 sessions. So with some advocacy largely from Mr. Allen, to provide greater equity, this would increase that program to an additional session per grade.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Carrie and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing that all is in favor? Seven, opposed? Zero. Motion passes seven-zero. Action item number five, approval of stipulation of settlement from point number 502.
This reflects the stipulation of settlement from point 502.
I need a motion and a second, please. Glenn and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing that all is in favor? Seven, opposed? Zero. Motion passes seven-zero. Action item number six, approval of field trip for Puerto Rican Hispanic youth leadership institute, training at Rassert on 225 and Coppins in Albany, three-seven to three-nine, 2020.
Yes, thank you. We are asking you to approve the overnight portion of this trip, which will take place March 7 through 9. So this youth leadership institute is a leadership development experience sponsored by the New York State Assembly. The organization that I mentioned earlier that actually assists with our professional learning next week, Arburn, they help facilitate this experience. Students need to go through a series of steps even to be able to apply. I'm very happy to report that we have two students out of a very competitive field in the Hudson Valley that were selected. All students who have attended, and adults who have attended this in the past, it's an absolutely life-changing experience. So I'm thrilled that our E&amp;L specialist, Ms. Alicia Manguso, will serve as a chaperone for this weekend. We have a Brewster bus that will be leaving on Saturday, meeting a regional bus up in New Paltz that will then take the students from the entire region up to Albany. So Mrs. Manguso has completed all the necessary paperwork to comply with our policies and procedures, which of course we thank her for, and of course, we also wish our students the best of luck.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Scott and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments?
It's a great program for the kids. And a number of them going on in Albany when I was there. They'll get the light out, so it's good to see.
All those in favor? Seven, opposed? Zero. Motion passes seven-zero. Can we move on to the consent agenda?
Just briefly, a board and public will note the appointment of Ms. Carl Bracken to the Unencumbered Guidance Council position and is stated as a result of Mr. Pompey's recommendation. So we're pleased to welcome Ms. Bracken back to Brewster. I understand that she had served as a leave replacement last year in the high school, and she comes highly regarded from the guidance department as well as the school.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Danny and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing that all is in favor? Seven, opposed? Zero. Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, we move on to remarks. Public remarks is up first. So if anyone out there wants to come up and address the board on anything, you have three minutes. And thank you, welcome.
Hi, I'm Jane Kavanagh. Was a little disconcerted at the conversation. I didn't know about the working session because I would have attended the audit. I was a little disappointed to not hear comments that were brought up by the last residency crowd meeting in this room, I think it was back in July or something, about why people were asking for an audit. The comments that the community made at that time were not actually discussed during the conversation that you guys had regarding the vote. So when you think about an audit, we all understand what happened with the state education department. We understand what the process is. But now we need to go in and say, okay, the documentation that was provided, does, did people meet that? Do you take a sampling of, say, 20% of the population? And you look and say, yes, we did get those documents that were done. Great. When we went through this whole process with the district, the expectation was that people were going to be sending in leases, and there will be approval of leases. But what the district communicated at that time is that it would be in a database, that the database would have a flag that said when leases expire, and that people would be following up on that. Is that process happening? How many leases do you have that are in the database today that are expired? Does anybody know that? Is there a dashboard that is anyone seeing that is being communicated to the board and other people in leadership position that says, this is how many people have expired leases? This is how many have been followed up on? We do not receive any of this information regarding these. The residency officer is going out for a visit? Or someone has contacted them to reach out and say, hey, your lease has expired? The concern that people that were asking for at that point in time of what's going on is making certain that documentation that was submitted actually met a bar, and that there's a third-party auditor reviewing it and saying, hey, yeah, these actually met the criteria that you guys set out, these did not. And then, of course, being able to do the ongoing monitoring. It wasn't just residents re-verification. It was, we are establishing new protocols, and this was from the district at that time, was we will continue to do the work that is needed on an ongoing basis, not just when a child registers. So those are the concerns. So I think not hearing those points in the discussion tonight feels like there's a gap in what the vote was about and the audit request, and the understanding of what those points were that were requested to be audited.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Karen Doby. I just had two questions that I want...
I just had two questions that I wanted to ask the board. I had written an email to the board and administration over a comment that Chief Delgado had made at a village meeting back in November, and I believe you were present as well. It was a very strong statement that he made, that there are hundreds of students that are getting on the bus that attend our school that he knows do not live here. I was really shocked by that statement. It was just a fluke. I was at the village meeting that evening, and I just wanted to follow up to see if we have reached out to him and talked to them and said, where did that statement come from? How do you know this? Is there proof? I've never been so happy to turn around and see another board member there as proof that he really did make the statement. I also had another question, too. You know, I don't really understand the whole audit and things like that, but I have a big question that maybe the board could look at and answer similar things to what Jamie was saying. What type of legal documentation are we accepting for guardianship of a child? That is a big statement when you give up the legal rights of your child. And if a family has guardianship over multiple nieces, nephews, friends, children, are we looking at those papers? Are they court papers? Do they have a race seal on there? And also for the safety of the children. If someone is giving up guardianship of their own child, are we following through with the social workers, with CPSC, to find out the reasons why? And to make sure, again, the safety of the child? These are big issues. There are many families here that do have guardianship of other children that are not biologically theirs. There are many reasons for it, but are we looking in that to really, is it legally the right way, not just a piece of paper? And also, again, for the safety of the children? You know, there's many reasons for that, and we really need to follow up on that and ask questions, and not just accept a simple statement from it. So that's something that I really wanted to know as far as the residency, how we're doing that moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, I will close public remarks, and can we address any of the things that were brought up?
I'd like to. Yeah, just, so Donna Mori is in the process. We've described at residency task force meetings and probably at board meetings as well, the process undertaken that all new registrants effective as of, I want to say, October of 2018, who have expiring leases. A field was created in Infinite Campus, our student database system, that allows the input of lease expiration dates, so from, again, I'd say, fall, winter of 2018, prospectively any new students have lease expiration date entered in that field. Donna is going back in time to review all of the documents that were received during residency verification, where we received documents for about 2,000 students over the course of two months, and didn't even have the field available in Infinite Campus, our student database system yet. She's going now back and inputting all those lease expiration dates in anticipation of this summer. They will be sending, Andy Alvarez, our residency officer, will be sending a letter to the parents or guardians, notifying them that they have an expiring lease coming up, and that they're required to submit updated residency documents. So that's going to happen on an annual basis each spring. Again, Donna is in the process of now going back and inputting all of the lease expiration dates. I just sent her an email asking for a status update, so we can update the board at the next board meeting. But the process will be that each year, each spring, those expiring leases, a letter will go out to them and begin the process that they'll have to provide residency verification on an annual basis if they have expiring leases, or if they're in a situation where they're doubled up, or have some kind of a temporary living arrangement.
I'd also like to add to that. And all really good points, all good questions that came up from the public comments, but Andy Alvarez is our residency officer, and this is an ongoing residency and child custody and safety and security of our students is constantly an ongoing process for all of us. The system that we've set up now, Andy is in constant communication with building principals so that we're working together, the secretaries, to make sure that everybody's communicating and that we're keeping a close watch on our kids. We also have our director of people personnel services with another layer there to make sure that we're, you know, are homeless students, are these students truly homeless, are they truly Brewster kids? So this is a new process that is in place. It has worked in many districts that I've been in prior to this. I think that Mr. Alvarez is doing a fantastic job. Victor, your entire team is doing a great job, but it is ongoing, and we need to continue to be diligent. So I think that, I just wanted to mention that. We will continue to do that.
And then, can we, I mean, I have to go look it up because I don't have it right now, but the question about the type of legal documents for guardianship.
Can I just want to add one more thing? And I'm actually meeting with one other parent that came out for the public forum, that they're going to be meeting with us. I'd be happy to meet any other parents that would like to come in, just to kind of dig a little bit further into some of the questions that they have. So please feel free to reach out to me, and we will certainly have you come in and sit down with us, and we can go through things in a much more informative way.
With regards to, I know it's outlined in the documents that we have, the type of documents that are acceptable for guardianship?
Yeah, we, yeah. We actually did ask, I can share that with you, I'll share it with you now. We asked our attorneys for guidance on that for the principals because it comes up more frequently on a building level with regard to guardianship. It's certainly foreign to me, my role in finance operations, but I reached out on behalf of principals and directors to get a legal update on that, which I shared with them, and I just actually shared with the board. We'd have it available to you. And of course, you know, there's a legal sense of what's considered, you know, it's not necessarily a court order, and I'm paraphrasing, a court order is not required to prove guardianship. I'll read the email if you'd like. Commissioner's Regulations Regarding Student Registration specifically say the district cannot require submission of a judicial custody order or an order of guardianship as a condition of enrollment. For your reference, that case of regulatory language below, Part 102(c) for purposes of parental relationship or proof that the child resides with the parents or persons in parental relation. Board of Education or its designee may accept an affidavit of the person or persons in parental relation indicating either that they are the parents with whom the child lawfully resides, or that they are the persons in parental relation to the child over whom they have total and permanent custody and control describing how they obtained. Total and permanent custody and control, whether through guardianship or education or its designee, may also accept other proofs such as documentation indicating that the child resides with the sponsor with whom the child has been placed by a federal agency. The Board of Education or its designee may not require submission of judicial custody order or an order of guardianship as a condition of enrollment. So again, you know, that's the legal reference. And as part of the registration packet, there is a, I believe, a parental affidavit that is available to be submitted in lieu of custody order. So again, custody order is not a requirement. It's acceptable in addition to a parental affidavit as per Part 102(c) of Commissioner's Regulations.
Okay, thank you. And then just to comment in terms of the audit, I think we did, I mean, maybe hearing it differently, but I think we did touch upon that, because we actually said exactly that, that we can't review where the proper documents submitted and all that while we're in the middle of it with a new residency officer. We wanted to give the process time to accumulate more information so that when we actually do review it, we have enough information to go through and evaluate it. So, you know, again, the board can review this next year, even this fall, the spring, whatever, if they'd like to at that point, and see if we want to look at it at that time. And then the other thing that brought up was the comments made by Chief Delgado. So I mean, I wasn't there, but I don't even think it's the point, is we can't address what another entity made as a blanket statement, which I don't know what facts he thinks he was referring to, but in terms of follow-up conversations that may have had.
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is that one of the most important parts of Andy Alvarez's job as our residency officer is that the communication between the school community and the community at large, making sure that we're continuing to keep those lines of communication open. So if the chief or anyone else sees something, that we make sure that we're continuing to communicate, investigate. So having Andy as someone who's had experience in the past doing this will really be a big help. So we'll see how the process, you know, we're working through it this year, and we will certainly, you know, as the board has asked, revisit it next year with a full presentation. But I think that that's going to be critical. It has been a critical piece in other districts that I've been in. They have been an excellent liaison between the school district and the community to make sure that we're all working together, and we're all doing our job to make sure we take care of our students that are here, and that students that are not residents of the community are not here. So that's incumbent upon us to make sure that we do that. And we also, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we train our staff and that they know the law, and that we're supporting our principals, our secretaries, our staff throughout everything.
So yes, we'll follow up on that as well. Okay, so I don't think, we got, we had emails in the past two weeks.
I have two that I want to, please. So we had one email that had come in about the possible HPV vaccination.
Yes, this is the previous one that we're going to fill out.
That we wanted to follow up on, and I want to do a little bit of homework, and the New York State School Council of Superintendents and also the lower Hudson superintendents. At this point, there's a strong feeling from the council that this is not going to go through the legislation, first of all. The second piece of that is that boards and superintendents throughout the region are not comfortable with putting forward a resolution regarding the vaccination because they're not healthcare professionals. So that is what we are continuing to monitor it, and I'll keep the board apprised of that. So that was the first email. Then we received a second email.
Sorry, Laura, finish this question. So at this point now, you're saying it doesn't look like the mandate or the bill of law is going to pass? Will we have notice when, if were that situation to change and all of a sudden politically it starts to become more viable, would we have time to then possibly come back and we look at and reconsider the possibility of taking action or not taking action?
Absolutely, yes. I'll be apprised of my finding updates to you. Any other questions?
Yeah, a number of the regional meetings and the state meetings, it also came up. Politicians, the press groups, the school board associations, even the, we have press briefing, and none of them believe it has any traction at this time. It's too dangerous. I mean, right now, also with the bail reform law changes, that's where all the activity is. So nobody's putting any, you know, a lot of action into the HPV, but the way we are.
Any other questions?
And the other email was in regards to residency. And it was excellent questions that came in about several of the things that came up tonight. So this particular individual is going to be coming in with us in the next week or two, so we can make sure that we're answering their questions, clarifying, and that we'll be prepared in the future when we do a presentation regarding an update to the board. And those are the only two. Thank you.
Board remarks and committee updates?
Just a couple of quick items. When I was at the village board meeting, following up with them, just keeping the communication open, I did mention to them that we have a residency officer. And if there was any interest or need or communication, we'd more than happy to set that up. Our Eagle Scout project that is going on with Andrew DeFabio this Friday at the VFW in town, I believe it's 6:00, 8:30, that everyone build your own burger night, which is probably the first Friday in Lent. But there is vegetable alternatives, so they said that is going on at that time. And I just wanted to give a quick update. I attended a presentation on early start times, more of a lark than anything else. But there's eight or 10 districts in Westchester that have moved, but they had start times of, some of them started as early as, you know, 7:00, 7:15 in the morning, and their elementary schools would start at like 9:30. I mean, they had drastic swings. They weren't in the middle on anything. If anything, our elementary school is one of the later starters than any one in the district, and our other stuff is right in the middle. I mean, I'll forward my notes. The only thing I saw that was very interesting was they have moved towards a community lunch, where, I know it's very difficult to do, but they have one period right in the middle of the day where everybody's at lunch. And they have kids eating in the hallway, kids eating down the hallway, kids in the classrooms. But the concept being it centralizes the lunch period, so as they move the schedules, it's easier to adjust to it. So it's almost like a preliminary step. And it also gives them time for extra aid in the school, extra teacher help. The clubs meet during those periods of time. Kids can do extra study. So it centralizes everything at one point, so if at any time they do move it back or forward, they already have that piece set up, and it just makes it more, you know, doable at a later date.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm curious on the notes, because, you know, they always say the older kids need more sleep time.
Yeah, they said the science, any school that did it, nobody disputed the science. Kids don't go to bed till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. Their brains don't turn off. So they are up till 11, and they need seven, eight hours of sleep. So getting a kid to school at, you know, 7:30, whatever, in the morning, there will always be that lack of education time. And all the schools that moved, some of them had an extended period, the results are across the board on everything, you know. Grades are up. Problems in town, discipline issues are down. I mean, everything goes across the board. It shows that way. I mean, it's a drastic change, but we are not on any end of it, so we're not one of those districts. Their elementary school started, their school started, elementary school was 9:15, middle school was 7:30, high school was 8:15. They were all across the board. And a lot of it was related also to their transportation. Since we have control of our transportation issue, it's not really, we're not one of those districts that would really see the benefit from something like this.
Okay, anyone else? I'll just check in my calendar, but our next, we're in March, so our next board meeting will be the 10th, March 10th. And then, we now have, there's a bunch of stuff happening on the school calendar. Sports awards was mentioned, tomorrow morning is recognition. So, yes, such a thing's coming up. And, right. And other remarks may be emailed to the board and superintendent at boea.com. We do not have executive session?
No.
Okay, we do not, gentlemen, have executive session, so I see a motion to the meeting. Scott, thank you. Carrie, all is in favor? Seven, zero. Motion passes there.